Almost. You'll be there about the week, yeah. The week, you're not there anymore.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started in about thirty seconds. All right, welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group, unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for today's council meeting, Monday, October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these items? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item one A is reappointing Marty Ramirez and Lynetta Edison Soe to the Multicultural Advisory Committee for terms to expire September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, introduced by Ward. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Schob. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call a roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, six-zero. Item one B is approving a system of communications protection policy and system and information integrity policy for the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County Enterprise Network, introduced by Ward. So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Item one C is approving a service maintenance agreement between the city and Accelerated Technology Laboratories, Inc., for a laboratory information management system to be used by the Lincoln wastewater sanitary engineering, introduced by Ward. So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion?
Good thing.
All right, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Move on to section four, public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling items four A and four B together.
Is there anyone? Sorry, go ahead. Is there anyone here?
I'm sorry.
After we've been gone a week, we don't have the same flow that we used to. Go for it.
Item four A and four B I'll call together. Application of Calvin's LLC doing business as Berry's for a Class CK liquor license located at two-three-five North Ninth Street, and the related manager application of Mark W. Solomon.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Here we go.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Can I take the mask off?
Yeah, just tell us your name and address and tell us a little bit about your application.
Hi, I'm Mike Newland. I'm the general manager of Berry's. Mark is on his way here, running a few minutes late. So I'll represent Berry's for right now. We are operating under temporary license at this point. We've been open since October first, and it's been very busy, but it's been very exciting to have Berry's back in the community. I think everyone's excited about it. Just a few things that I will point out is we have an outside security firm that handles all of our ID checks. We have a staff come from Omaha that's called All-in-One Security. So there's no more frat boy bouncers at the door letting their buddies in. We always have at least two managers on duty, Mark, the owner, and myself are usually there during peak hours, in addition to a couple other experienced bar managers. We haven't had any problems so far. You know, we run a pretty tight ship, and I think when I took this job, I told Mark, "We're going to run this as a business, not a traditional bar." So my previous experience was CEO, general manager at Horstman's Park and Lincoln Racecourse for Omaha Exposition and Racing for the past five years. And I believe, to the best of my memory, in those five years, we never had a liquor violation at either facility. And if you've ever been to Lincoln Racecourse or Horstman's Park during live racing or the Kentucky Derby, there's a lot of people there. So in addition to the security staff that we have, we also have currently twelve surveillance cameras operating on a loop, so we can go back and look anything up. Within the next two weeks, we should have a total of thirty-two cameras at Berry's in all locations, covering the roof, the club, the outside of the building and everything. So we're going to have better surveillance, better security, and better policies than just about anyone in Lincoln that's operating a restaurant or bar. Any questions for us?
Are there any questions?
I believe Mark is here.
Oh, good.
Timing's perfect.
Sorry for being a little tardy.
Just want to tell us your name and address and a little bit about your application.
You bet. Mark Solomon, forty-six, sixty-five, Innovation Drive, Lincoln, six-eight-five-two-one. Part, I'm a little out of breath. You know, we're really excited to be here today. We really are. Berry's is one of those institutions in Lincoln. Everybody knows Berry's. Everybody talks about Berry's. It's the front door of the city when you stop at that first traffic light as you come into Haymarket and downtown. We're really privileged to be a gatekeeper of that corner. And we want to be a good gatekeeper today and for many years to come. We've, as an ownership team, have really focused hard on putting the right managers in place with experience, people who know what they're doing, who come from pedigree, who come from, well, quite frankly, decades of experience. And we want to make sure that the way that things were run, the way that previous owners made the newspaper for the wrong reasons, is completely avoided. And it can be exercised with a modicum of detail. And I think that, to date, we've done that. In the first three game days that we've had, two at home, one away, we've had over ten thousand visitors on Saturdays alone. And we have had, I think, a very strict policy of zero tolerance. We have tried our very best to make sure that our security folks are well-trained and ready for any challenge that walks that door. And our staff, I think, is very well-trained. I think that we've got a good team in place to ensure success for the long term. And again, we're just really proud to be here and really proud for the opportunity to hopefully see this do fruition for the next few years to come.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Councilwoman Washington?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And first, I want to thank you for acknowledging Berry's history.
Yes, ma'am.
And taking steps to improve the business model so that we have a great establishment who can serve the community well. Thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much for coming down.
Yeah, thank you, folks.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this application? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling items four C and four D together. Application of D A C C LLC doing business as Gravity Lincoln for a Class CK liquor license located at eleven forty O Street, and the related manager application of Derek N. Jones. Please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you barely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
If you could just start off with your name and address and tell us a little bit about your application.
All right, my name is Derek Jones. Business address is eleven forty O Street. And it's a new business, so I'll just take a few moments and just read my spiel on what we're about. Lincoln, Nebraska is a quintessential college town. On game day, the city turns red and white as people cheer on their home team. The primary and often sole place to celebrate is one's favorite neighborhood dive for a younger crowd, one of the plethora of familiar bars on O Street or in the rail yard. Although people ages twenty to twenty-four make up just over ten percent of the population, the vast majority of entertainment and nightlife options are tailored to this age group. The most popular social gathering places are relaxed in nature, serve simple, familiar drinks, and play a certain genre of music. Gravity seeks to reach a different group of Lincolnites. People ages twenty-five to forty-four make up over twenty-six percent of the city's population, but upscale lounge and nightclub spaces that cater to this group are virtually nonexistent. This group is educated, possesses a disposable income, and wants to spend their money on experiences rather than things. But they've outgrown the downtown bar scene and are in search of an elevated nightlife experience. Gravity provides this group with the experiences they desire in the heart of downtown Lincoln. Gravity Lincoln is an upscale lounge with a nightlife concept, offering young professionals a place to gather, eat, drink, and dance in a space more reminiscent of an urban oasis rather than a small Midwest town. The cocktails are fresh, unique, and made to order. The music is hot, it's newer, and the energy is just right. So we welcome you to join us at Gravity, whether it's for drinks after work, a night of dancing, a Saturday or Sunday champagne brunch.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time?
No.
Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down.
Good luck.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none.
This was item four C and D, correct?
Uh huh.
Mr. Chair, seeing no one else coming forward to talk about items in this section, I'd like to move approval of items four A through four D.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schob, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven-zero. Okay, we can move on to our section five, public hearing resolutions. Item five A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for September sixteenth through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item five B is approval of amendment number three to the conditional annexation agreement for Hub Hall Heights between the city and Apple's Way LLC to amend the provisions related to the construction of West Holdridge Street between Northwest Forty-eighth Street and West Chitwick Lane.
Members of the council, Tim C., Assistant City Attorney, five-five-five South Tenth Street. What you have before you is an amendment number, I think it's three, to the Hub Hall Heights annexation agreement that dates back a number of years. This one is to reflect the fact that as we did bids for the West Holdridge Street from Northwest Forty-eighth Street to the east, those bids came in higher than was anticipated in the most recent amendment to the agreement. And so additional funds were allocated from Lincoln on the Move in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to help make up the difference on that. One other thing I would add is there will be, there's a motion to amend, I believe, before you that the city would assume the responsibility to build the street. That will make some differences from a practical standpoint that will make it much simpler to go down this and get this done. So that's the agreement before you. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you for coming down. Can you talk to us a little bit about the cap of the cost to the city? So the cap on the cost is, I think you're talking about the right turn lane that the city's, the city identified a right turn lane at Northwest Forty-eighth Street and West Holdridge. I have to keep my couple projects in my mind, so get that one straight. It's really just, the thought is that the cost will be approximately ninety-two to ninety-three thousand dollars, but that's an estimate based on the bid. And so the idea was to just create a flat cap so that it didn't exceed a hundred thousand dollars for that turn lane. But they're doing the turn lane sooner than anticipated? Yeah, it'll be done as part of this project. It'll just be combined into the entire project. So yes, it was shown in the bid, but as we got to looking at it, one of the ways to cut costs obviously would have been to cut this out of the project. Instead, the city, the proposals for the city to come up with the money to do that turn lane now rather than waiting down the road.
Any other questions for the city at this time? Councilman McGinnis?
So we're amending this so that the city will do the construction of Holdridge? Is that correct?
That's correct.
In the past, it was the owner that agreed to carry all the cost and expense and build it?
Right. The owner will still carry the cost and expense to the extent that there's not funds available through impact fees or Lincoln on the Move funds upfront, but the city will actually manage and operate the contract. That allows, makes it simpler for the contractor to move forward, and that's how they bid the project. So this is really to reflect that aspect of it.
Okay, so. First, go ahead.
Councilwoman Washington?
Can, Mr. C., can you just simplify this for me? Yes. I'm going to ask a question, and you're going to correct me. So my understanding is this project, the cost of it is still borne by the applicant, but we're consolidating the projects so that it's easier to move the whole contract forward. But the applicant is paying for the right turn lane. No, the city is going to pay for the right, the city will provide the money for the right turn lane. Okay. And the adjacent, I mean, the property owner has no cost in this? Well, the right turn lane is a hundred thousand dollars. The overall project is just shy of two million dollars. Okay. The developer is fronting the costs on ninety percent of this project. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman McGinnis?
I just, I guess I'm looking through the numbers, and they said that cost improvements are estimated. Anticipation for the arterial street impact fees to be used?
Right.
And the Lincoln on the Move money?
There are two sources.
And TIFF money, right? Or is TIFF money being used?
There's no TIFF money here, no.
Okay. So there's those two sources the city is using, which will add up to how much?
Which will add up to the cost of the, approximately one point nine million when it's all said and done.
Okay, so out of pocket for the contractor, for the developer, could be close to zero.
No, I mean, if you'll notice in there, the Lincoln on the Move funds, five hundred and fifty thousand, the largest share of those don't become available until fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and that's assuming that this council appropriates those funds. So the developer is taking on some risk there.
So this is in the future?
Right.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Do you want to call Tom back?
Yeah.
For item five C? Okay, we'll move on to item five C. Would the applicant like to speak first?
I'll have to read item five C. Appeal of denial of request of deviation from access management policy requirements for North Twenty-seventh Street and Enterprise Drive.
Good afternoon, council. I do believe that this item has been deferred to next week when will be before you on an agreement that is going to be amended for the offsite improvements for this development.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Tom Houston, two-three-three South Thirteenth Street. I would request deferral of this item because you have an item on your first reading agenda, which is an amendment to a transportation improvement agreement. It'd be best to hear both of these items concurrently, since they really deal with, this item is actually included in that first amendment. So let's consolidate and save us all time.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on item five C? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
Item five D is appeal of denial of request for deviation from access management policy requirements for fifty-six oh one, Union Hill Road.
Good afternoon, council members. Brad Marshall with Olson. I am here before you for a deviation request. We have an appeal, so I will be asking for your vote in favor of the appeal. So let me give some background for this request and the area that it is concerning. Thompson Creek, which is down by South Fifty-sixth Street and Pine Lake Road. I'll have an overall map here for you. Okay, so this is Pine Lake Road at the top, South Fifty-sixth Street here, where about my pen is laying. And then this area that is designated in the red dash line is the use permit that is associated with the deviation request. This area that is identified is an O-three area. It's gone through numerous revisions and so forth. And in two thousand, and I believe in two thousand and two, there was an annexation agreement for the Thompson Creek area. The developer was required to pay one-half the cost of an arterial roadway, which would be two lanes, a median, the grading, the design, and so forth that is associated with South Fifty-sixth Street for a quarter mile, which is basically the front edge of the project. It dedicated the right-of-way and everything that would be needed for the city to go ahead and do that project in the future. So we fast forward a couple of years, and it gone through a couple of different amendments. There is a roadway right here, Union Hill Road. Here's a larger shot of this Thompson Creek, Fifty-sixth, Union Hill Road. And there's a couple of still undeveloped lots there. And on the southeast corner, I'll refer to this as Lot Seven. It's Lot Seven actually final-platted, and I believe in then also in the use permit as well. So Lot Seven had gone through an amendment process. The developer came forward and asked for the size of the building to be increased. As part of that, the city requested traffic impact study and analysis of what that would actually do to the overall traffic, the roadways and everything associated with it. Back in two thousand and two, two thousand and five, things were done a little bit differently than they are today. You're connecting to an arterial roadway, access management policy was adopted in two thousand and twelve, and you'd probably be required to put in turn lanes regardless of the amount of traffic that was generated. However, in two thousand and six, a generation of traffic actually was studied and accepted, I guess, as part of that. I'll go over the study here in a couple of moments. But basically, the agreement was made between the developer and the city for a right turn lane to be required northbound on Fifty-sixth Street, turning onto Union Hill Road. So that requirement was put onto the use permit, and fast forward fifteen years, here we are, this lot is still undeveloped. So basically, I'll boil it down to this. I'm asking the city council to amend that requirement to not require a turn lane for this lot to develop. There is an interested party in the purchase of this lot. He is a chiropractor. He wants to do medical office for this build about what is allowed onto the lot at ten thousand square feet. He has interested party for a dentist, and then there will be a little leftover for office or other medical office component to the building. Dr. Spencer Brown may have reached out to a couple of the members here to kind of give a little feedback as to what his intent is for the development of this lot. So why should we even consider taking away something that was required by the L T U, at the time Public Works, for the project? Because they increased the size of the building. So basically, what I'm asking is to revert back to what was previously approved from a traffic generation, from an engineering perspective. This lot was previously approved on the preliminary plat as apartments. Had number of dwelling units on it, and through a number of iterations, as part of the packet, you can see this, that it did then get zoned O-three, and then actually increase the overall size of that building. What's interesting to me, I guess, a little bit, is over the time period of all these amendments, it has gone from seventy-six thousand plus some dwelling units up to a peak of a hundred and one thousand square feet in the development, and back down to about where we are is about eighty-one thousand. We still have this lot that I'm talking to you about and two other lots that are still to develop. Again, all office components, not high-traffic generators into the development.
I'm so sorry. Could you make that bigger? None of that was actually?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. So this is in two thousand and two, when the original permit was approved. In two thousand and five, two thousand and six, excuse me. Let me find my little asterisk here. Two thousand and six, it was approved with the turn lane for seventy-nine thousand. A number of other amendments brought it up to ninety-nine and a hundred and one. So I'm asking, with, as part of this, the overall development will be brought back down to about eighty-one thousand. As part of my request, we would submit an administrative amendment to limit the uses. As I understood it, when the traffic study was submitted in two thousand and six, the concern was trip generation. It was O-three, you might have retail uses. Actually, the study, I said I would talk about a little bit. The study did an alternative analogy. The study did an alternative analysis. I have an Alt.1 and Alt.2. It included office and retail. And in my opinion, it increased the numbers artificially. Because what was in the study, and it showed trips going to be generated to the site, could not be approved through the zoning. You are going to be capped at 20% retail. These included 30% retail, and then also financial institutions with drive-throughs and so forth that increased a lot of traffic through the area. The very first line on here is what was originally approved for. So I'm basically going full circle, or trying to, in my request to you. I'm going from the blue zone of the R3, the townhomes, to what is proposed with the medical office and the 10,000 square feet for the medical office. These numbers are very, very similar to what was originally approved. So we're not asking for additional trips to it. And as part of this, we would submit an administrative amendment to Planning Department to limit those uses to medical, office, or office only. The buyer would give up his right to have any type of retail uses in the future, and therefore trying to keep the trip generations down. There was one more point I wanted to make before I let the city staff come in and explain their position on this for the denial of the deviation. We did ask for the city for some traffic accident data at the intersection. There were three years that were able to be provided for this. I believe there were two accidents. One was weather-related. And then the other one was an east and west bound that a right turn lane would not have helped to alleviate the accident. But no serious accidents that we could account for. With that, I will take any questions now, or...
Are there any questions for Mr. Marshall? Councilman Washington?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I've got a few questions, just so that I've got apples and apples being compared. And so that I can understand the timeline with that. Oh, please leave all of that information there. Let's start with timeline. So let's go back to the very first moment that this project, or a project on this property came forward. Was that 2002, 2001?
For the development itself?
Yeah, for that, for this parcel.
So I do believe the development would have come after the annexation agreement. That would have been in 2001, 2002, and then the development would have started to develop out with housing and office.
Okay, and that was for housing and office?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the square footage? I saw 53 units, but I didn't see square footage.
Originally?
Yeah.
So let's see here, the original had, that's a good question. I believe the original had 52 units of townhomes or multifamily, because like, side-by-side or something wouldn't have fit on the lot.
Yeah, but what would the square footage be? Because in other areas...
It was 5,000 square feet originally, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And no turn lane?
And no turn lane requirement.
And then in 2006, the turn lane was added?
It was.
And what was the square footage?
It was, it went from 5,000 to 10,000.
Okay, thank you. And you're asking us to cap the square footage at...
10,000.
Without a turn lane?
Without a turn lane. And the reason for that is the traffic study at the time showed a significant amount of retail and/or financial institution with drive-throughs that would have had increased traffic through because it was so much larger. But we are, the buyer of this lot, would agree to just an office or medical office designation for this lot. And so it does, it is able to keep down those trips generated to the site.
Okay, and then one last question, just to clarify that I know exactly what we're talking about. There is a hashed red line around an area that's larger than the parcel you're discussing. Was all of that in one parcel part of the negotiations on the right turn lane?
It was not.
Okay.
It was just designated for this one particular lot.
Okay. And do you have any idea what the undeveloped lots on the north side of Union Hill, how they're zoned?
O3 as well.
As well, all right.
The improvements, again, it's hard to understand when the city's actually going to do those improvements. So the developer has paid those. The temporary improvement, when it was 2006, may have made sense. If it was built in 2006, and there was somebody that developed that lot, we would have gotten 15, maybe 20 years out of that pavement that we would have put down. Fast forward 15 years now, where it's operated without a turn lane, and we're showing that the development of this one lot will not impact that in particular lot. So if I came in, let's put it this way, if I came in for just this lot, and I submitted a traffic study, that traffic study would not say that lot caused a turn lane. But I think, can't, I can't speak because I wasn't part of it back in 2006, but I think it was. I still have some lots to develop here. Some of it may carry retail uses. There may be a lot of trips generated here. Let's require the turn lane to be installed. And now that we have a little bit better picture of what is actually happening here, we can say it is office that is going to be, that has developed in this particular area. There is office that is wanting to build here. And we will agree to that, to maintain that forever, that will be associated with that lot, that we won't have large trip generations. I should say, this lot is a little bit more difficult to develop. That's probably why it hasn't gone in 15 years. It's got high overhead LES lines over the top of it, the gray differential. There's retaining walls that are required for building to sit up there.
Yeah.
It's still a nice spot. It's just, it will sit there. And if the denial does not, if the denial is not approved, it's very likely that that lot will sit there until 56th Street is a four-lane arterial roadway.
Councilman Chob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Marshall, thank you for coming forward. You made reference in your presentation about accidents?
Yes.
And you said there were, based on data, you got there were only three? That makes me, so are you, is it the position that the turning lane would make that intersection safer? Is that the assertion that, and since there were no accidents, there is no need for it to be? Help me, I'm drowning here.
Well, I think L T U, I want to speak for them, but if there were, if there were serious accidents there that were associated with the improvement that we're talking about today, that would help alleviate some of those accidents of happening, then I think that the L T U would say, we definitely need it here. We are having, you know, traffic congestion here, and this turn lane will help tremendously. But to the contrary, we're not seeing that a northbound right turn lane is going to help a problem here. There's not a problem, I guess that's what I'm saying. And so it's, what the developer would be required to put in a turn lane that costs a couple hundred thousand dollars, that may be ripped out in five years, or six years, or seven years. That's really up to the city to decide at this point. So the give and take is, the appeal is upheld, there's no turn lane, the lot is sold. You get somebody to build a business on the lot. Or it's very likely, I can't say for certain, somebody could come in tomorrow and say, yeah, I'll pay for the turn lane. I want that lot so bad. But I've been associated with the landowner for five or six years. This is only the second interested party that I've been part of with them. And the first one was retail uses, just too much retail that we could actually sell it to them. Or I should say we, but the landowner could sell the lot to somebody for that particular use. This seemed to be a really good fit for the use, a really good fit for keeping traffics down at this intersection. And somebody that wants to expand their business in Lincoln.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions for Mr. Marshall, Councilwoman Raybold, and then we'll do Councilman Ginnis after that.
Thank you, Brad, for coming down. Can you tell us, what is the speed limit on that road at this point in time?
That's a good question. I do believe it's 45 or 50 miles per hour on that section of roadway. And I would imagine when it's four lanes, it will continue to be 45. L T U can, of course, speak to that when they are up here.
Well, I was going to ask your consideration on this. I know on one of the previous items that we heard today is that the city made a decision, we're going to get that right turn lane in, designated right turn lane in sooner, because they know the cost of putting it in later will be more. And so, and I think I heard the cost thrown out, about 92,000 to 93,000 for a designated right turn lane. Is that, would cost sharing be something your client would consider if the city paid half and your client paid half?
I can't answer that. What I can tell about the difference is, because I think you're talking about the previous Holdred Street project, where they are able to tack on the pavement and a little bit more efficiency. They have a project going on, they have a contractor, they have unit prices, they can establish a turn lane very easily. They'll grade it out. Here, on the other hand, a contractor would have to grade it. He would have to basically do all the components of the project, so it's a little bit less inefficient. And I don't know that the city would actually contribute because it's not a permanent improvement. The city's already been paid for the permanent improvement, and that will come at some point in the future. I did hear, I do believe, one city staff member say, you know, this is going to cost the city money. It's going to, you know, not, we're just passing the buck to the developer, or the developer passing the buck onto the city. The city's been compensated for their arterial road improvements already. It's really up to the city when they do install it. So those turn lanes that will be permanent are part of that package that the city will do. We just, it's not in the C I P, and we don't know when it's going to happen.
Councilman Beckus?
So, Mr. Marshall, the improvement that we're talking about is just a temporary, let's say asphalt, right turn lane that when 56th Street gets widened, goes away permanently and is gone. This is really an interim solution, potentially a solution for the foreseeable future until 56th Street's widened from the roundabout to the four-lane where it connects just to the north of this site.
It is. I don't do a good job, so I'm kind of doing the painting of the picture of what's actually out there. It is a rural section. It is asphalt. What would go in as part of that project would be tack-on asphalt lane. So we'd basically add on 12 or 13-foot of asphalt, and it would be temporary in nature. What we're looking forward to in the future is a concrete four-lane divided road with a median and so forth, with turn lanes. That would be included in that particular area.
And so that would be the permanent...
That would be the permanent...
...solution to the intersection down the road, which the developer has contributed to at this point in time already.
Right.
The item we're talking about right now is a temporary fix until that happens.
A temporary fix, if it's needed. That's what we're talking about. And a little bit bigger picture, I mean, just to get a good feel for the particular area. A road... Oh, I already got it up here. An arterial roadway. I should say a major arterial roadway like 56th Street. We typically have four granted at full section, or four, excuse me, tongue twister. Full access intersections. This was done in pieces, and it's got, I think it's actually got five, or let's see here. We've got Red Rock and Hidco. Thompson Creek, you can see is one of more of the thoroughfares, for Thompson Creek Boulevard, as well as this goes into Village Gardens. Here, where Union Road is, this goes into the development, and mainly feeds just the O3 area. It goes half a block later and then dead ends. As well as then, we've got two other full access intersections south, on the south half-mile, where they are feeding really into the residential. So this is not a road that goes through and to the center and bulk of a square mile. It is just mainly there just to feed this particular corner with the office uses.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Brad, do you know when that expansion to the four-lane is projected to come in? Is it like in the 1 to 6? Is it in the C I P?
It's not in the C I P currently.
It's not in the C I P, so Councilmember Beckus is correct. It would just be a temporary fix to solve a short-term, well, it sounds like it's a long-term, you know, issue.
Yeah, I don't have my looking glass here by any means, but South Lincoln, as it is growing, South Lincoln at 56th and Yankee Hill Road, essentially, Pine Lake, I would imagine it's going to be on L T U's radar very soon. It's not in the sixth year, but I would imagine it's right outside. And the reason that it's probably not in there is they just did overlay the section of the roadway about, I don't know, about a year and a half ago, maybe.
Any further questions for Mr. Marshall? Councilman Washington?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. All right, I think this is my last couple of questions, Mr. Marshall. So you had talked about Union Hill, I think, if you, Union Hill dead-ending, dead-ending into the development. And it does cross 56th, and it does, it looks like it is possible for some of the residential property holders to... Actually, they come down, they might come down Union Hill.
It could.
Because there's access to that street. And I think I get the temporary nature. I'm a little concerned about safety because if it's not 50, it's 55 just south of there, and then it slows down. But there are some sort of safety concerns about people making right-hand turns when traffic behind them is doing 55, and trying to slow down and get within the 45, 50, wherever it's actually posted right then. So I just want to make certain that we're not creating a situation that causes additional accidents. From what, you know, right now, three is great, but if I'm reading the trip counts correctly, you expect, I don't know, 400 trips a day, and that's 400 times for people to put their brakes on. And at a time when we know that it's developing, we're going to have a new high school, even though 56th doesn't have an interchange exit off the South Beltway, 54th, no. I guess 70th is the closest.
70th, yep.
70th is the closest, but there's the possibility that 54th could have an interchange at some point in the future. And it may be a ways away, but I just know that there's going to be a lot of traffic on that road. And so I'm, you know, hopefully that means the C I P is going to pull 56th forward.
Yeah, this is an uncontrolled, it's non-signal, right? And so it's a stop intersection, so you do have to navigate that traffic coming and going. What I would say is, a little bit, in my opinion, the stars have aligned as to the particular use going on this corner.
Yeah.
So you have a chiropractor that has regular scheduled visits to their business, dentist, the same thing. This isn't a, I'll just refer to it this way, because I've got kids, and I take them to a clinic where you're turning, you're seeing a lot of doctors in one particular building, a lot of PAs, and you've got kids that are sick and non-scheduled appointments coming all the time. So what I mean by the stars align being is you've got a user here that is a little bit more regular from the chip generation. And again, I think that putting the best foot forward is saying, hey, we won't, you know, we're still going to have a couple thousand square feet in this building. We're not going to do retail. We're not going to try to, you know, do something that's going to kick up the trips in addition to all that. So it's kind of the decision, can they have a... So it's kind of the decision, can they have a office, medical office user with chiropractic and dentist, or let it sit until the improvements, from the safety perspective, really is constructed by the city, then something or anything could go there.
And I overestimated, that was two-hundred-and-fifty-three trips, pardon me. All right, thanks.
Any further questions for Mr. Marshall? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and have you step down, and then we'll have the city come up, and then we'll do a public hearing, and then we'll invite you back up to provide a rebuttal.
Good afternoon. Dan Carpenter, City of Lincoln Traffic Engineering Manager for Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. So just a couple points to clear up before I go through our justification behind not approving this deviation request. This, the speed limit on South Fifty-Sixth Street is forty-five miles per hour currently. All the way to Yankee Hill Road, I believe the speed limit was changed with the installation of the roundabout at Fifty-Sixth and Yankee Hill. There were two crashes, both occurred back in 2018. One of them was a southbound rear-end crash in the through lane, where, again, a turn lane may have helped that, but this, it's not necessarily the turn lane that we're talking about today. The other one was a cross-traffic crash that occurred between a southbound and westbound vehicle, where the westbound vehicle pulled out into the, into the South Fifty-Sixth Street. Going back to the history of this intersection and this development, this development, again, dates back to 2002, when the annexation agreement was executed. At that time, Lot Seven, Block One, the parcel that we're discussing today, was shown to be developed into thirty-six apartment units. In 2006, there was an administrative amendment zero-six-zero-nine-one that increased the floor area from five thousand to ten thousand square feet, and changed the zoning from R-three to O-three. In this amendment, a turn lane is mentioned for the first time, and it requires adding the turn lane in Fifty-Sixth Street, as well as placing a limit on PM trips to fifty. This requirement has been on record and known to all interested parties in this parcel since 2006. This turn lane could have been installed at any time by the developer. Again, Olson is now proposing that because the proposed development consists of a smaller footprint, they do not believe a turn lane is warranted, and are asking that we deviate from our access management standards in removing the turn lane requirement. Again, contrary to Olson's position, the proposed changes do not diminish the need for turn lanes at this location. The turn lanes are necessary, while the turn lane is necessary to ensure safe and efficient travel in this corridor. It is also required by city standards, and all developers are held to the same standard. Speaking as a traffic engineer, I am a big proponent of turn lanes specifically on high-speed roadways such as South Fifty-Sixth. We, we traffic engineers define any high-speed roadway as anything with a speed limit of forty-five and above. Anytime we can separate turning traffic from through traffic, there is a significant decrease in the risk for rear-end crashes along the major roadway. It's one of the, one of the largest reasons why we have an access management policy that requires turn lanes to be installed at any arterial street connection. By installing the turn lane, again, it significantly decreases the risk of rear-end crashes. And knowing that this has been a requirement of development to this parcel since 2006, we denied the application for deviation request.
Are there any questions for Mr. Carpenter at this time? Councilman Cho?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carpenter, thank you for coming forward. So my question, which was worded really badly the first time around, was that turning lanes will make this intersection safer?
Turn lanes will reduce the risk of crashes at this intersection.
Reduce the risk. Thank you.
Any Councilman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Mr. Carpenter, for being here. This was also asked before, but, so the collision that we talked about, the rear-ending, was that not due to inclement weather?
I'd have to take a closer look at that crash report, but it occurred in early October.
Okay. That's all right.
And was a rear-end crash between a vehicle slowing down to take a southbound right turn onto Union Hill Road, and then the vehicle behind them not stopping.
Okay, fair enough. I think Mr. Marshall referred to the two accidents and one being related to weather. So I just wanted to clarify that. Second question I had is, so the city has been paid one time for this over the years. Do you know the amount of that, of that payment?
That's a good question. I don't know the amount of that payment or the status of that payment.
That's all right. That's all right. My last question is, and this has also been asked, but perhaps LTO can answer that. Is it not fair to ask when we might be widening South Fifty-Sixth?
So it's...
So we don't have to go back and tear up, after we ask someone to put in a turn lane?
So it's correct that South Fifty-Sixth Street is not included within the one and six-year CIP, as well as it is not included in the 2050 LRTP fiscally constrained plan. Knowing the, knowing the LRTP, we do not currently have funds for widening Fifty-Sixth Street, and it is not a fiscally constrained project, so, or, sorry, fiscally committed project. So within the 2050 LRTP, it is marked as an unfunded project at this time.
So does that mean you don't know when, we don't have a way of knowing when?
That's correct.
Okay. So if we were to guess, I know, that's probably not a fair question, but do you get my point? I mean, we do, to come back and then having asked a developer to pay for this, and then if it's ten years, that's one thing, but if it could be less, clearly?
It's likely, it's not financially committed within the 2050 LRTP.
Okay, I understand. Fair enough, all right. Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Mr. Carpenter, Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. Do you ever believe that this intersection would warrant a stoplight?
It's unlikely.
Unlikely, because it kind of dead-ends, and there's other through streets around it that would probably be more collector streets than this one?
Yep, that's correct. Again, Union Hill on both sides of South Fifty-Sixth Street is fully developed minus this parcel. We would not anticipate a increase in trips to warrant traffic signalization at any point in the future.
Okay. And then to, oh, if the developer does not, unable to sell this lot, and it never gets developed in the next fifteen years, is the city going to come in and put a turn lane in because it's needed? Or would the city put in its own turn lane if there's no building going on here? Or, because you're saying one is needed today, correct?
Yeah, and that's a great question, one that we would evaluate in the future. If, if crashes increase at this intersection, in the scenario where we're widening South Fifty-Sixth, we would look at the need for a turn lane, as well as the geometric considerations for adding one with the widened roadway, as well as if there were any additional improvements made to this intersection or to the South Fifty-Sixth corridor, where that would rank in priority for installing a right turn lane.
Okay. But at this point, you're saying it's not even in the 2050
Correct.
LRTP. Okay.
Councilman Raybold?
Thank you for coming down. Can you tell us a little bit, what type of right, designated right turn lane material would be used? Are you asking the applicant to install a concrete one or an asphalt one? And if you could tell us the difference in the cost and the durability? I'm trying to come up with a compromise and a solution. So the other part of that question is, would the city be willing to do a cost-share plan to get that designated right turn lane implemented sooner rather than later?
The cost of an asphalt turn lane versus a concrete turn lane, I don't have those costs in front of me right now. I would anticipate that the concrete turn lane does cost more, because it is a full-depth concrete turn lane. The asphalt would require, actually, both turn lanes would require additional grading work to occur. That grading work would bring the turn lane to the appropriate grade for this intersection, and reduce the need for grading in the future. I would say, again, a concrete turn lane is probably in the range of a hundred to a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for this roadway asphalt. Good question. I don't know off the top of my head, but I would assume maybe twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, less than that.
Because I know that they talked about ninety-two thousand to ninety-three thousand for the previous items, turn lane. And I think, what was the other question? Would the city be willing to do a cost share with the developer on this project?
I think that's ultimately a decision that's made with LTO as a whole. I don't want to commit us to spending funds, because this is a, it's a, it's not a financially... Sorry, let me rephrase. Ultimately, the decision to allocate city funds to constructing this turn lane would depend on the priorities of LTO, as well as the need in this area as well immediately or some point in the future.
Councilman Beckius?
Hi. Thanks for coming forward today. So you had mentioned, just in your previous response, about the needs of LTO and being a fiscally constrained environment in which we work. And Councilman McGinnis had mentioned, or had made the point, that we're not seeing improvement to this section of South Fifty-Sixth Street in the long-term transportation plan through 2050. So would it be fair to say that in terms of priority needs in the city of Lincoln and the fiscally constrained environment in which we work, that this section of South Fifty-Sixth Street ranks lower than other, than other areas of town, other streets that are looking for improvement? And I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong here, that LTO, generally speaking, and perhaps this is more of a question for Director Elliott, I don't know, is looking at potential trip counts for those streets, looking at potential hazards for those streets, and basically creates a system, if you will, that delineates which improvements rank higher than others? Is that a fair assessment, generally speaking?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And would it be fair to say that the long-term prospect of South Fifty-Sixth Street, in particular this section, is not then generating the interest level of other projects, given the fiscally constrained environment in which we work?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's through 2050?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Carpenter at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down. I'll ask if there's any other city staff that would like to present information first, and then we'll open up to a public hearing. So, Mr. Hendrickson?
Steve Hendrickson, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Just a few things of information to try to help clear up the history on this and how it fits in with other developments. Brad was noting, he was comparing the trips to fifty-two townhomes. This site was actually approved for thirty-six apartment units. So back when it was originally approved in 2002, that's the same time that the annexation agreement was done. So in July 2002, this site was zoned R-three as part of a CUP, and it was shown for thirty-six apartments. So we'd be comparing thirty-six apartments to the ten thousand square feet. I would also note that Brad had offered that this development would agree to cap the square footage at ten thousand square feet. It is already capped at ten thousand square feet. That's what the square footage has been shown here since 2006, when it was increased in the floor area. And that's when the turn lane was added to it. So there wouldn't be an amendment necessary to cap it at ten thousand square feet. It is already capped at ten thousand square feet. And certainly within any development that we bring forward to you, you get the entire development, like Fire Ridge or Wandering Creek or anything like that. So when those developments come forward to you, any individual little parcel might be able to come in and argue, well, our parcel is the same square footage, or we're not increasing our parcel's square footage, so we don't want to do this improvement, because our individual parcel is not requiring the improvement. And that would be probably true. But you're always looking at the development as a whole. And the right turn lanes are actually a very common improvement that are required with other developments. Fire Ridge, Wandering Creek, Shadow Creek, the Dominion and Stevens Creek are all projects that recently have been forward and approved, and they had right turn lanes. And in many cases, a lot of those right turn lanes were also temporary right turn lanes, because we don't know when Ninety-Eight Street might be improved, or Van Dorn might be improved, or we continue on with our improvements, or A Street, or we know exactly when Hundred and Fifth and O is going to be done. So it's actually a very common requirement to have a temporary right turn lane. Some developers have looked at it and said, well, could we make this a permanent improvement? That way, it could be eligible for impact fee reimbursement, because often these are newer projects that are paying impact fees. And so it is a very common one where there's that possibility that you could go in, it becomes a more expensive improvement often. But some developers will take the more expensive improvement, because they could then potentially be reimbursed. I would also note that in most of all those cases, you don't look at what are the accident or traffic crashes today, because in most cases, they would be zero. There is no access point, there is no urban development. And so the traffic today would be, would warrant that turn lane. But it has been the policy of the city and all these other developments that, well, you put the right turn lane in to begin with so that you have it for the long term, even if that improvement might be five or ten years down the road, though in many cases, particularly something that's not funded in the CUP, or the CIP, it could be twenty or fifteen years down the road. So it is quite common that we ask for the turn lanes upfront, because you don't know that, you don't, you don't base it on the traffic today, you're looking at the long term, that people are making lots of improvements. And that would include other intersections similar to this one, where, yes, it is not a major collector within the neighborhood, but it is an access point, and it's been the city's access management policy to have that improvement made upfront, and all of the access points are to have right turn lanes.
Councilman McGinnis?
When did we approve the access management program? What year was that? Do we remember?
2006.
I think 2012 is correct.
Okay. So these guys were in before the access management?
Correct. And that was a part of, actually, for the reason for the access management policy is that we had been routinely requiring right and left turn lanes. And so the, even the development community really welcomed the ability, hey, let's get this a set policy, because we'd had a lot of turn lanes required prior to 2012, but it wasn't as systematic.
Okay. But at that time, it was not part of an access management or required at that point, when they first came on? As a, as a policy? It was just negotiated in every, every time?
Yes. Each development, you had traffic studies, you looked at what was appropriate, and increasingly, right-hand turn lanes have been a part of the city's. While we didn't have an access management policy, it had been long a internal policy, I would say, of the city to have, to look at the turn lanes.
One more question. If we still require them to build a turn lane and add an extra hundreds of thousands of dollars onto the cost of this lot, would it behoove them to maybe come in and ask for retail on this lot? And would the city okay a retail on this lot?
No, the decision about what would be an appropriate land use wouldn't be based on what is the cost. It would be based on what is an appropriate use at that location. You'd have to look at their existing houses next door to the site. There isn't any adjacent retail of the site, the land to the north is Office. And so, no, you wouldn't necessarily look at changing this to retail, if you want me to give a real quick impression.
Yeah, I kind of thought so. And I was just trying to figure out a way they could maybe recoup the cost of doing that and be able to build on it.
Yeah. Certainly, it is unique in that most of the times... Certainly, it is unique in that most of the times, a developer would have spread the cost of the improvements over the entire development and not assigned them to a single lot.
Okay. Councilman Irbel?
Thank you for coming down. Can you explain a little bit about the impact fees that have already been collected? And then I'm going to go back to my favorite topic, talking about asphalt versus concrete.
Yes, so this project was approved in 2002, and they did have an annexation agreement that talked about them making improvements to this. Typically, anything that was approved prior to 2003, when we implemented the impact fee ordinance, was then typically exempt from paying impact fees. I have to admit, I'm sorry, I didn't look to see is that also the case here, but I would have assumed that Thompson Creek would be one of those, since it was approved before time and had made improvements, that we were not charging then arterial street impact fees to that development. But I'll have to verify that.
Okay. And then, going back to asphalt versus concrete, if there is a requirement for the developer to build that designated right turn lane, are you asking them to do it in asphalt or concrete? That been called out?
In terms of newer developments, when they want to have reimbursement, it needs to meet the threshold that is a permanent improvement. And so the surface material doesn't necessarily make a difference if they, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if the surface is thick enough and it's done at the proper grade, that could be an improvement that could last, as a permanent basis, more than 15 years, and so that would be eligible for improvement. So the fact that it's in asphalt doesn't necessarily mean it wouldn't be reimbursed.
So the developer would have to pay impact fees on doing this project, right?
On this specific project, I will have to double-check to see, is it one that, by the fact that prior to 2003, it had agreed to make improvements, is not being charged arterial street impact fees? I'd have to verify that.
Okay. So say, it is being charged, impact fees. Could they use, if they chose to go in asphalt, just so long as it meets the appropriate specifications? That could be reimbursable to what they're paying for impact fees, if impact fees are required?
If it was a permanent improvement, and this was the permanent grade, yes, that has been the case in other developments, that you could get reimbursed for that.
So will you be able to come back to us and tell us if impact fees are going to be charged to this development?
I'll quickly try to verify if this is a site that has received previously exemptions or not. Yes, I'll try to look that up.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Sherman Bowers. Please don't leave Mr. Hendrickson. So you said that right now, the project, or the parcel was capped at 10,000 square feet?
Correct.
And so the potential owner has offered, we'll cap it at 10,000, and we'll limit our uses to medical or to office?
It is already shown for office use of 10,000 square feet.
And so that was my next thing. What is, so the use is already at office?
Correct. Because it is O3 office zoning.
Okay.
And we previously used to show something as either medical office or general office, but our parking requirement now is the same for those two uses. And so in general, we just say office anymore, and that way, it could be medical or it could be general office.
Okay. Was it ever approved for a bank before?
In my notes, we just show that it was, it went from 36 multifamily units in 2002. It then went to 5,000 square feet. And then in 2006, it was increased from 5,000 to 10,000, and that's when the note was included as part of the administrative amendment. The developer agreed, yes, I'll agree to add the note for about the right turn lane. At the same time, I'm increasing it from 5,000 to 10,000 square feet of office.
Okay. So the generation of the right turn lane had to do with the amount of square footage?
Correct.
Or then it had to do with the use, whether it was regular office or medical office? Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else from the city that would like to provide information? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go, oh, Councilman Irbel?
I was hoping Ms. Elliott would come forward.
Sure.
Thank you very much for being here. I guess my question goes back to the priorities of the city. I mean, clearly, we want this development to move forward, and I'm sure the city agrees with that as well. And going back to a compromise of cost sharing, is it something that the city, if they split the costs, $42,000 each for the development, including the grading, is that something that the city would have funding or be able to provide funding for? Or how does that work?
Unfortunately, we have more projects out there than we have funding for, and for prioritization, this is lower on the priority scale. We've got many more arterials and existing. We also have a lot of development out there as well. So the funding situation right now, we just don't have the funds, and we are already looking for additional funds because the bids are coming in higher on other projects and everything. So at this point, we really don't have the additional funds to do that. Is it something that, down the road, we could look at? Yeah. In the scheme of things, $100,000 isn't a huge amount, but when you're trying to find $100,000 for this project, and this project, and this project, next thing you know, we're up in the millions. So although we believe that this turn lane is a priority, just as we do all right turn lanes, which is why the Chitwood one is something that we're trying to make happen, it's not one right now that we have funding for.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Elliott?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Director Elliott, to go back to the notion that we have been paid, the city's been paid already in the past for this, not trying to be the budget expert, but would that not have been set aside or used for something like this at this time?
I, we will have to get back. I don't know that there are impact fees for this, just given the timing and everything. So that is something I would like to look into and confirm, because I don't have that. And so hopefully, between Steve and I and the L T U Budget Office, we will get that figured out, and we can get that information to you.
That would be great, or to see where that went, or how that has been used, because it's, you know, I think that would be appropriate for us to know.
Absolutely. We will definitely get that information to you. Typically, what we do on impact fees is they are set aside. Obviously, there's a time limit for which they can be used, eight years. And so we'll have record of that, if that existed.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Director Elliott? Okay. Seeing none, thanks so much. Is there anyone else on the city's side that would like to provide information? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the public hearing portion of it. Is there anyone from the public that would like to provide information on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Are there any questions from the council members that they have of any city staff or anything? Seeing none, then, Mr. Marshall, would you like to come up and provide a rebuttal?
Yes, thank you very much. I do want to, I hope, clarify a couple of things. So impact fees, I don't believe that impact fees were into effect at the time, so it would have been just a cash payment by the developer. So he would have paid the cash. The annexation agreement says that it is $196,000 to be paid, plus the right-of-way to be dedicated. And when I looked into it, I'd been told that had been completed at that time. So clarifying back to, I do appreciate Steve's comments about, we do look at this much better these days. We look at these developments, and the developments that he mentioned, Dominion and Wandering Creek and Fire Ridge, we look at these connections, arterial roadways, and these are able to spread across the developments and to incur those costs, because I will agree with Dan. A turn lane, in essential, is and will reduce the potential risk of accidents. I won't dispute that. I mean, every intersection should have turn lanes, but they don't. This was, for some reason, boiled down to one particular lot. And when we look at it, and Steve mentioned the increases of this particular lot, 36 units, to 5,000 to 10,000, you'll notice, none of the other lots in that development increased with that amendment that that note showed up. So it just went, it was that lot. It went from 5,000 to 10,000. The other lots didn't participate, they didn't get the increases to it, they didn't get 15% or anything to it. To go back and help clarify my little chart here, I didn't do a good job of explaining this, but this is directly from the traffic impact study. I do believe that the city utilized, required, approved, and utilized to make the decision for the right turn lane. So again, I just believe that these numbers are inflated. That the basis of making the decision at the time in 2006 for the right turn lane, 52 units. There were only 36 approved, so it showed an inflated amount of trips generated. Office and retail, there's 30% of retail into an O3. You can't do that per the zoning. A bank, a financial institution, you could do something and generate a lot of trips. Dan did say that there was a PM peak cap put onto this, and I do believe that scared somebody going, "Wow, they could put a bank in the O3, and there could be a lot of trips generated, so let's cap the PM trips." So although we are capped at 10,000 square feet, I am saying, these were the basis, the decision by the developer was made, because this was the approved traffic study with this administrative amendment. So it shows a lot of trips being generated. I'm trying to pull this back. I'm trying to say, we'll do office. This office will basically revert it back to the original counts that were approved without the turn lane. And I would say, if Dan is saying that the development requires a turn lane today, that's when the city does come through and improve this particular area, I would take that as a carry-forward. It would be required when the city put it here, when the city did the improvements itself, a turn lane would be required. It was just done differently 15, 20 years ago. You go down this corridor, I mentioned, there's five main arterial road connections. Only half of them have turn lanes. Half of them only have left turn lanes. All the turn lanes don't meet the current standard for length, de-acceleration, and storage. So when my number, I come and I say it's going to cost a couple hundred thousand dollars, my turn lane is going to be twice as long as any particular turn lane out on 56th Street, because I have to meet that current standard. So 150 feet is, I think, the longest turn lane on that entire corridor. My de-acceleration and storage will be double that. So that's the reason for the cost differentiation, for meeting the current standard. Again, wasn't really, to that level of detail, approved in 2006 by the developer, but that's the level of standard that we would have to, and that's why it just doesn't make financial and economic sense to have to do this for one particular lot. And I know I disagree with the city's staff on that. It is one lot, and we're at the end of the development, but that's why I'm in front of you. It's one lot, or three lots, if you will, there's three lots that are undeveloped, and it will have to be spread out.
Any further questions for Mr. Marshall? Councilman Washington?
We've talked a lot of details this evening already, or afternoon already, and so I don't want to get into details, though I could probably ask a couple more I'm going to hold off. This is a resolution up for vote today. Do you want to delay, ask for a delay, or do you want to move forward today?
I certainly appreciate the question. And I do appreciate Jane asking about city cost share. We, just to dive on that really quickly, for that to be impact, impact fee, let's say impact fees were available in the district, and for us to utilize something like that, fairly typical, we do get costs reimbursed for something like grading, because you can establish that as a permanent improvement. The reality is, and I don't know for sure, but as it was stated, you're going to have to come to line and grade, and maybe elevate that to the current, or the currently approved future improvement grade. So what is tacked on easily with asphalt and having to go to a permanent improvement, you may, having to go a quarter mile in each direction, just to rip it up and get it elevated. And then you'll probably end up doing more temporary improvements to tie it into the existing than just the temporary turn lane improvement. So to answer your question, I think we've exhausted ourselves from the options, and I really do appreciate the options presented by the council. We've met with staff many times on this. We've asked, or we went through the process for deviation, deviation, denial, and to the appeal before you to ask for your approval today for this, the deviation from the developer. We're at that point.
Any further questions for Mr. Marshall? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
So we had the applicant, we had city staff provide information, had a public hearing, had an opportunity for rebuttal, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Item 5 is authorizing the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds, Gate House Rose Project, in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed $10 million, on behalf of Gate House Rose LLC, to provide funds to finance a portion of the cost of the acquisitions, construction, and equipping of a 98 multifamily housing project, including related and subordinate facilities, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with the issuance of the bonds, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Gentlemen, welcome.
Dan Marvyn, Urban Development. This is a little unusual, because this is one of the first ones that I think we've had as far as the actual bond ordinance that would be coming through. And so I think Mike will go through and walk the details of this through to you. You do have in your packet, there's some language that talks about on notice to the public hearing, and I think the language there is very clear, this is not an obligation to the City of Lincoln, doesn't put an obligation on the City of Lincoln, or any of the revenue streams that the city has. It uses, merely uses the city as a vehicle for the issuance of the bonds, but Mike will be able to give us much better explanations, so I'll turn it over to him.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Mike Rogers with Gilmore &amp; Bell, 450 Regency Parkway in Omaha, Bond Counsel to the City. Not to go too far into the big picture, but the reason we're before you is because this project is asking for a tax-exempt financing, a borrowing where the interest is exempt from federal income tax. And one of the fundamental requirements of that is that the financing be done by a governmental entity. That's one of the fundamentals in the tax code. Typically, tax-exempt financings are only possible for governmental entities, but there are some exceptions. 501(c)(3) financings is one exception. Earlier this year, you did a financing for Nebraska Wesleyan University under the same statute that we're using here. The statute allows the city to serve as what's called a conduit issuer, where you serve the role as bond issuer to satisfy the federal tax code requirement of a governmental issuer. The statutes that we're using were designed to protect the governmental issuer, the city in this case, from potential liability, and make it clear that the repayment obligation is solely that of the borrower, the ultimate borrower. In this case, it's obviously not a 501(c)(3) financing. The borrower here is a for-profit entity, but the federal tax code gives permission for this type of entity to borrow with tax-exempt interest if it gets a special volume cap allocation from the state. The Nebraska Investment Finance Authority is the volume cap allocation allocator for the state of Nebraska. They have approved volume cap allocation for this project, and earlier in the year, when you adopted an intent resolution to serve as conduit issuer, that was required by NIFA, Nebraska Investment Finance Authority, to receive the application for volume cap. They have awarded volume cap for this project, and so now we're back in front of you. Sorry, that's a long, drawn-out way, but there will be several of these coming before you, so I thought it might be worthwhile to explain the pathway. We're back before you to ask for approval of a bond resolution to formally authorize the issuance of this tax-exempt, these tax-exempt bonds for the project. The maximum principal amount is $10 million. The resolution authorizes and approves the forms of trust indenture, loan agreement, land use restriction agreement, which restricts use of the project by the developer, a tax compliance agreement, and a bond purchase agreement. And so the, let's see here, after approval, the requirement is that this financing close by December 20th. I think the expectation is that it would close in November at some point. These are, this resolution, I think Director Marvin last week indicated, is related to items seven F through H on the agenda. There were public hearings for tax increment financing last week. Those, the tax increment bond ordinance is up for approval today, final approval, as well as the, the related resolutions. This is, also goes along with the same project for Gatehouse Rose. And with that, that's a lot. I will stop and see if there are questions, or if I can answer anything for you.
Are there any questions?
Good day.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to provide a comment on this item?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Gatehouse Rose Limited Partnership and Hoppy and Son, the developer of this project, this is my sixth appearance before you on this project. So it's a complex financing, and this, the funding that's in front of you today will roughly pay for about 50% of this project. To reacquaint you, it's a 98-unit project on the west edge of Wayuka. We are funding this affordable housing project with this tax-exempt bond, and also low-income housing tax credits in Nebraska Affordable Housing Tax Credits. I guess the other thing I do want to tell you is that we have been working closely with the lender group. There's a lender consortium comprised of Union Bank, Horizon Bank, Pinnacle Bank, and Westgate Bank, that really will be buying the bond and funding the project, that will really fund the construction loan for the construction of the project. And we think that we have created a template that will be reusable multiple times by the City of Lincoln. So it's very beneficial for the project, for the city, to serve as the issuer of these kinds of projects. I remember back in the 80s, the City of Lincoln used to issue many industrial revenue bonds, and this is similar to that, and it's a really beneficial aspect of providing affordable housing, and it's a good mechanism for us to continue to use in the City of Lincoln. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you, Mr. Houston. So we might be seeing a few more of these presented to us.
Oh, we hope so, yes.
And is it your expectation, or should we have the expectation that all of those bond financed requests have NIFA approval? That's the only way they qualify?
Correct.
Okay.
NIFA does control the allocation process for the volume cap, and, and they can serve as issuer. I think it's, I think it'll be better for the affordable housing efforts in the City of Lincoln, for the city, to serve as the governmental issuer.
Okay, thank you.
At no risk to the city.
Councilman McGinnis?
Can the county board be a conduit also?
County board also does, can serve as a governmental issuer, and they have on occasion.
Done that before on IDABOSS, I know.
Yeah, correct.
A lot of times, so, okay.
Councilman Washington?
I do have one question, and, and maybe this is a question from Mike Rogers, but it's the allocation that we get. So there's a cap in the state for how much can be allocated across the state, and if more projects come to us, are we at any point going to bump up against that allo, that cap, the allocation cap?
I, I think it's true, but the, that decision's going to be made at the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority. I don't think the city council is going to be put in a position where you have to choose one project over another.
The NIFA will have made those decisions before we say the project.
That's where the allocation's made.
Okay. Thank you. The allocation allocator, I like that. I'm going to try and use that in a sentence.
Yeah, that's a alliteration.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Anyone else like to provide a comment on this, on this item? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Items five A, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for September 16 through September 30, 2021, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call a roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item five B is approval of amendment number three to the conditional annexation agreement for Hub Hall Heights between the city and Applesway LLC to amend the provisions related to the construction of West Holdridge Street between Northwest 48th Street and West Chipwood Lane. Introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you. I would move to amend this bill to 21R-475 and adopt with substitute attachment A, which we've been given.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing no discussion on the motion to amend, may we please call a roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Now back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a roll call on the main motion?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Oh, let's get Tom back.
Yeah. Just leave him there.
Never leave him.
Thank you.
Item five C is appeal of denial of request for deviation from access management policy requirements for North 27th Street and Enterprise Drive, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized?
Yes, I would like to delay, move to delay this until next week, I presume, to our next meeting.
Second?
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on the motion to delay?
That includes public hearing also.
To include public hearing. Any conversation on that? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the motion to delay to include public hearing for one week.
And that's including public hearing and action for one week, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Sorry. Motion carried 7-0. Item five D is appeal of denial of request for deviation from access management policy requirements for 5601 Union Hill Road, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Councilwoman Raybold, you're recognized?
I would feel a lot more comfortable if we could get some answers to some of the questions that have been presented tonight, particularly concerning impact fees. I think certainly that would give me better clarity on my vote, and I would propose that we delay by one week as well until October 25th to get some answers to the questions.
Second?
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, the reason that I can second this and support this is because I do have a couple of questions. It seems a little odd, and maybe it's unfair of me to call it odd, that all of this right turn lane has fallen to one, one lot within the development. But it feels like this has been, the buck has been passed down to this lot, and it, it's a pretty heavy cost. And I had hoped to, to see a solution here, some shared, something that we could do to, to spread the cost out, or to lessen the cost to the applicant. So I'll support the delay for a week of real problem solving.
Any other discussion on this motion to delay? Councilman McGinnis?
All right, and I agree. I think there's some questions that we still may have, but it sounded like there'd been a lot of discussions before, previous and over months of time and such with LTU and with the developer, looking for solutions so they wouldn't have to be at this point. So I, for me, I think they may have reached that point that either we voted up or down and move forward at this point.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too agree there's questions, but I think, I know I am ready to vote today, and I appreciate all the work that LTU has done with the applicant and with Olson, but it sounds like the applicant is ready to, for our, for us to vote, and I feel comfortable to proceed. And I think, as Mr. Marshall said, I think all the discussions have been exhausted by now, so I am comfortable in proceeding and will not support the delay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll give you an opportunity to close in about two seconds. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment? I'll make a comment first, and then I'll give you an opportunity to close. I also want to say that I'm ready to vote today, and think that we should move on and get this cleared up now, and just wanted to make that statement that I'm in favor of moving forward today. Councilwoman Raybold, you're recognized?
Well, I think the other questions I have is like, well, how much will this right turn lane exactly cost? What are the grading costs? What is, if we go with asphalt, what is reimbursable so that we can come to a fair and just decision? Because it does seem odd that it, the burden and the buck has been passed to that one lot, and if the developer has paid in to some pot of money, then I would, I would feel better saying in my vote to say, okay, there's already been funds dispersed and that it should have been built at one point in time. So there's a lot of questions I have, and in all fairness to both parties, we've really given it more than an hour and five minutes discussion, and I still have questions that I think any reasonable-minded person would say, show me the cost. What, how much are the total costs to get it done? Does it have to be as long as, as we, Mr. Marshall has said? Is there a compromise on that? I mean, we're trying to make it safer, and I, in all good conscience, could not vote to support this appeal, knowing that I haven't done everything to make sure that we're doing everything for all the safe reasons, to keep people protected. You know, it's part of our, our access management plan, and a lot more people have spent hours and hours and hours coming to this conclusion. I'm not a traffic engineer. I can't even begin to second guess some of the, the reasons and logic, and I guess board-certified recommendations have come down on traffic management. I just want to do the safe and right thing, but I also want to do the fair thing. I need to know the costs. I want to make sure that there can be maybe some compromise on it, but how can we make a good decision if we don't know the costs? And I guess my, my mantra is if you don't measure it, how can you manage it? So I, for that reason, I respectfully ask for just one week delay.
I believe Councilman Beckyus has a comment to make.
I too am ready to vote today. However, as my colleagues are seeking a one-week delay here, I'll be happy to vote to, to delay for one week and look forward to voting on the 25th on this issue.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we had an open, we had discussion closed. Some extra comments? Any, I'll do another quick round if there's any last-minute comments. Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on Councilwoman Raybold's motion to delay for one week.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Schob?
No.
Beckyus?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, three to four.
Now back to the main motion. Open it up again. Any discussion on the main motion? Councilman Schob, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like the city attorney to help me better understand if we're voting yes to affirm the appeal, or no to affirm the depart, what am I voting for? What's a yes vote going to mean? What's a no vote going to mean?
Just to clarify, I agree.
In the past, when we've had an appeal, a yes vote meant we denied the appeal, and we went with a yes for the department's recommendation.
I think that this is different. If we look at the resolution, I'm seeing that there is, under the resolution, we have space to have approve or denied on the resolution.
So that should have been part of our motion?
If, if we look at the resolution, we have in there, at the end, looks like we have both approved and denied. And so I think that this is, I'm going to check with LTU for one second, but the way that this is written up, I think that we are voting as if it's before you to either just approve or deny. So it's not...
To approve the appeal?
To approve the denial?
No.
No, so it's, so it's, it's, so the denial was appealed to you, and then I, the way that it's written up, the way that I am understanding is you're treating it like it's coming before you for the first time, and you're either going to approve it or deny it.
Approve or deny what?
The request?
The request, so.
Request for...
How about we take a small break and talk about it?
I'm sorry?
How about we have somebody reconsider a delay for one week?
Well, I'll ask LTU to, Ms. Elliott to come up here, but maybe she can help explain it.
I'll tell you what, so we're almost at, what's that?
Let's do a break.
I was going to say, Mr. Christie, Director Elliott?
Thank you. This is before you as, on, as a new request, so our LTU appeal is just a recommendation to you. So the, the question before you is, do you affirm the deviation request, or do you deny the deviation request?
So a vote yes is a vote for what Mr. Marshall is recommending. A vote no would be against what Mr. Marshall is asking for.
Correct.
Perfect. We all clear?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Schob, for bringing, making sure that we're doing that correctly. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support the request to appeal, and here's just a couple of reasons why I want to explain my vote yes. And I do appreciate all of our policies, especially the access manager, management policy. I have spent time thinking a lot about this before it came onto our agenda today, but sometimes, for me, I think that our job is, once in a while, to respond to projects in our city where we have the prerogative to think outside the box a bit. Our development tool is TIF, 99.9% of the time. So once in a while, we have an opportunity to take the prerogative as a council, as a leader, to offer other ways to help development. And while I do respect our processes and policies we have in place, I think it was an attorney friend of mine that once told me, and I'm not an attorney, I'm not an engineer, but they said, just because it's the law doesn't always mean it's right, or just because it's our policy doesn't always make it correct. So that's another reason, sometimes that's my, that's my mantra, often, when we have an opportunity not to leave this lot vacant again, undeveloped again. And we don't know that, but when now we have a chance to help someone go in and develop this. So that's one of the reasons I'm going to support this appeal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Beckyus?
Thank you. I will also vote to support the deviation. The access management policy is, is vastly important in the City of Lincoln, and I hesitate to deviate from it. However, the proposed lane is a temporary solution. It's, at some point, a permanent solution will come along, even though we might be looking at that potentially being decades in the making. But a city is not finished in a short period of time. Takes a long time to get to a finished product in a city, and honestly, it's never really finished. But at the end of the day, if we can do something here to support development on this lot that has been so far underutilized for the past 15 years, I think we should do it, and so I'll vote in support of the deviation.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, I, I can't vote in support of the deviation because of unresolved questions, and I, I really can't second guess a traffic engineer when, when they say it reduces the risk of, of collision. And in all good conscience, I, I, I can't support a deviation if I think of one family that, whose lives could be saved by putting in a designated right turn lane. I'd always err on that side of caution, so I can't support the deviation. I would have loved for a delay to get answers to questions.
Any further conversation? Councilman Washington?
This is a really hard one for me, because I, I...
This is a really hard one for me because I, I do trust our city engineers and our traffic engineers and I believe that the access policy makes good sense 99.8% of the time. And so, I mean, no, but nothing's perfect, so I'm not going to ask for perfection from any one policy or system. But you know, I, I have driven this road a lot and you know, I used to drive the road that was signed the most dangerous road in Lancaster County every day, Salt Hill. And the number of accidents that I almost witnessed because someone was doing 55 and stopped and they put on their blinkers to make a right hand turn and the person behind them swerved into the other lane to miss them. I just, I look at that and wonder and worry about the safety of it, but I also can see that the trajectory of this project is that everything got shoved down to this lot and I do not want this to be the, the recipe for other developers to pull a CUP and then move the cost down to the last lot sold, because I think it's unfair and we get into these situations. I just, I'm, would very much like to support future development in Lincoln and support the development of this lot in particular, but it is still troubling to me that another week maybe could have come up with a solution that everyone could have agreed to.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing no further comments, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Raybold?
No.
Washington? Ward?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to. Item 5E is authorizing the issuance of multi-family housing revenue bonds. Gatehouse Rose Project in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed 10 million on behalf of Gatehouse Rose LLC to provide funds to finance a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction and equipment, equipping of a 98-unit multi-family housing project, including related and subordinate facilities, authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with issuance of the bonds and authorizing certain and other actions in connection with the issuance of the bonds, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Council's had a request to take a...
Five minute?
Five minute break, which actually means seven. So if we can come back at five o'clock, we'll get started again. We stand in recess. We'll go ahead and move on to item 6 on our agenda.
Okay, I'll actually be calling item 6A and 6B together. Approving an extension to the Food and Beverage Services Agreement for the Pinnacle Bank Arena and related facilities between the City and SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as saver to October 31, 2022, and approving an extension of the Second Management Agreement for Pinnacle Bank Arena between the City of Lincoln and SMG for the operation and management of Pinnacle Bank Arena and their facilities to October 31, 2022.
Chris Connolly, City Law, 555 South 10th Street. Good afternoon. SMG has an agreement with the city to provide food and beverage service at Pinnacle Bank Arena, and they are in need of renewing their liquor license for the next year. One of the requirements for their liquor license is they have an agreement that goes for the entire full year of their liquor license. Their agreement for management and food and beverage service is scheduled to expire next August 31st, so we're coming up two months short. So the purpose of these two amendments that we are proposing in each of the ordinances is to extend the management services and the food and beverage services to the end of October of 2022, so that they can go ahead now and apply for their liquor license. For that, if you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Connolly? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Councilwoman Raybold, did you have something you wanted to?
Well, I guess I was going to ask a question of our attorney. Is there a special request concerning?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, thank you.
And could you explain it, please?
I am going to ask, thank you. I am going to ask that the council suspend the rules and move this on to third reading today to help expedite their ability to go ahead and move and apply for the license now.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Raybold. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move we suspend our rules and vote today on these two amendments.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules and vote on this today? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and do the roll call vote on the motion to suspend the rules to vote on these items today.
Can I ask you to introduce that again, please?
Councilwoman Ward. And then it was seconded by Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you. Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, so now we have the main motion for item 6A and 6B. Do we need to vote on those separately, Mr. Christie? Yes, we do. Okay, so for item 6A, let's go ahead and call item 6A and we'll do a vote on it.
I'll read it back into the record. Approving an extension to the Food and Beverage Services Agreement for the Pinnacle Bank Arena and related facilities between the City and SMG Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as saver for October 31, 2022, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Councilman Schob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having heard testimony and had public hearing on this item, I'll be voting yes.
Perfect. Any further comments or questions on item 6A? Okay, seeing none, may we please call a roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes. Pregnant pause.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 6B is approving an extension of the Second Management Agreement for Pinnacle Bank Arena between City of Lincoln and SMG for the operation and management of Pinnacle Bank Arena and other facilities to October 31, 2022, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none?
Yeah.
May we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We now move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A, approving the lease schedule number two and related documents to the master lease purchase agreement for lease purchase financing and maintenance equipment in the amount not to exceed $714,284.64, introduced by Schob.
Second.
Hello?
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Lease approved.
Item 7B is approving a one-year lease between City and Bennett American Legion Post, number 280, for the lease of office space by Aging Partners for its senior center program at 970 Monroe, Bennett, Nebraska, for a term of one year from September 1st through August 31, 2022, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
We seem to approve a lot of these. I mean, and they're pretty easy to approve and get through. Have we ever thought about doing more than a one-year lease on some of these? Or, and I'll have that discussed. Randy?
Here's Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones. And the American Legion Post.
It's Randy Jones, Director of Aging Partners. This year, we realized that these leases need to come before council, so we began that process in midstream.
Okay.
We want to do a two or three-year agreement, just as much as you might want to, so in the future, we'll be putting those further years on there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7C is approving the lease agreement between the City and Fourth Community Center for the lease of office space by Aging Partners for its senior center program at 311 Nima House Street, Fourth Nebraska, for a term of one year from September 1, 2021 to August 31, 2022, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7D is approving the lease agreement between the City and Asian Community and Cultural Center for the lease of office space by Aging Partners for its senior care program at 144 North 44th Street, Suite A, Lincoln, Nebraska, for a term of one year from September 1, 2021 to August 31, 2022, introduced by Schob.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7E is approving lease agreement between City of Lincoln and the City of Hickman for the lease of office space by Aging Partners for its senior center program at Hickman Community Center, 115 Locust Street, Hickman, Nebraska, for a term of one year from September 1, 2021 to August 31, 2022, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7F is approving the Gatehouse Rose Redevelopment Agreement between Gatehouse Rose LP and the City of Lincoln relating to the redevelopment of the property generally located at R Street, Wine Street, and 36th Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward.
Thank both of you, yeah.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7G is amending the fiscal year 2021-22 CIP to authorize and appropriate $2 million in TIF funds for the Gatehouse Rose Redevelopment Project, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7H is authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Gatehouse Rose Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $2 million, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7I is Change of Zone 21032, Application of High Bar Properties LLC, for a change from R2 Residential District to O2 Suburban Office District on property generally located at 2152 South 56th Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
You're enjoying that too much.
Item 7J is approving conditional zoning agreement between the City and High Bar Properties LLC for property generally located at 2152 South 56th Street, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 7K, Change of Zone 21030, Application of Lee Douglas Property Management for a change from O2 Suburban Office District to B3 Commercial District on property generally located at 4821 Lowell Avenue, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Schob?
Hold it. I think we have a motion to amend. I know we're moving off quickly, but
Yes.
Earlier to
Under the discussion, yes, motion to amend. Second, then we call.
Yeah.
So we'll go back to discussion. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, I do have a question. It says motion to amend number one for 21-127, but isn't it really for the following item? 21R-462 on conditional zoning agreement? It's really for the next item? That it should be amended.
You're right. It's the conditional zoning.
But it's for item 7L.
7L.
Okay.
I jumped.
So on the motion to amend piece of paper, is wrong?
It's wrong.
It's wrong.
462. You're right.
How about, yeah.
Isn't it?
That's the one that's, that's the restrictions on the zoning?
Yeah, it's approving the conditional zoning agreement.
The conditional zoning agreement.
Which is what we're amending. Right?
Right.
That is correct.
Is that correct, then? Okay.
Yes.
So we don't need to amend this one.
So we're amending the next one?
Yes, we are.
Awesome. So any further discussion on this item, then? Okay. It's been moved, it's been seconded. We'll be happy to jump on the next one to motion to amend the next one. May we please call the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
So pardon me for jumping on that.
No, no.
Item 7L, Approving Conditional Zoning Agreement between the City and Lee Douglas Property Management for property generally located at 4821 Lowell Avenue, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to introduce motion to amend number one with amendments to the motion to amend number one to reflect that it's referencing 21R-462.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion on the motion to amend presented by Councilwoman Raybold?
It's actually to incorporate additional use restrictions in the agreement that all parties have agreed to.
Any further comments by the council? Okay, seeing none, may we please call the roll on Raybold's motion to amend?
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now back to the main motion. Any discussion on the new main motion? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's go ahead and call the roll on the main motion.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Same with that.
All right.
Item 7M, Amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter 14.70, excavations to require no less than 48 hours' notice to the Transportation and Utilities Right-of-Way Division prior to beginning excavation, requiring all work be done pursuant to the City of Lincoln's standard specifications, standard plans, and traffic control guidelines, and requiring permit fees to provide a two-year warranty on the work, and repealing sections 14.70.010, 14.70.030, 14.70.040, and 14.70.050 as heretofore existing, introduced by Schob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Resolutions, First Reading, Section 8, are items 8A through 8H. ordinances, First Readings, and Related Resolutions are items 9A through
Nine, way down the alphabet.
Yes. 9I. And our pending list are items 10A through 10C.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Raybold, you're recognized?
Um, I make a motion that we remove from the pending list items 10A, 10B, 10C for action on November 1, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Schob. Mr. Hendrickson?
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. I did confirm with Deb Hoy that that date works out just fine for her.
Okay. Perfect, awesome. Any further discussion by the council on the motion to move it off pending? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public comment section. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda? What's that?
Keep talking.
May do so today at our open microphone session. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics. Today is an open microphone section, session, and our next one will be October 25. When you come up to the microphone, please just state your name and your address, and you have the floor.
Julian Sawyer, 601 R Street. I'm with the Raskins for medical marijuana, obviously. Basically, I wanted to get your guys' opinion on how you stand on medical marijuana for Nebraska. That's all I wanted to ask.
I appreciate you coming down. Typically, this is a listening session for the council. What I would really recommend, though, is if you email or give each of us a call, or maybe even hang out after the meeting ends, because I don't think there's a ton of people behind you. Maybe some of us can come out and talk to you right now, or just hang out for a bit.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you repeat your address one more time, please?
601 R Street.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else I would like to address the council at this time? Is there anyone else I would like to address the council this time? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Beckius, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
We stand adjourned.